Thank you. So we have, nobody very remotely Gina is excused for tonight, so she won't be here. Before we do review of the manifest, I just want to recognize that. Can't even say it. Tonight is Sean and Julia's last regular board meeting. Thank you guys so much. I'm not even gonna say much because I will get too, you can talk. I will get too emotional, but thank you so much for everything. We're gonna miss you guys so much. I mean, you still have a couple more meetings with us.
That's true.
Regular meeting. Yeah. We threw some excellent and we threw a retreat.
Yeah, we, 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 we both noticed.
But seriously, you're both wonderful board members.
Been an experience.
Yes, it has. Alright, so now down to business. Review of the manifest. Everybody look at the manifest. They've got email to us.
Yes.
Any questions? Okay. I'll outline this later. Or I don't need to because you. Alright, next up is approval of minutes. And Maria had put the minutes of February ninth at your spot. I didn't get those turned out for the packet, so I apologize for that, for that, because I took those. Just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that slate of minutes.
Alright, any discussion, corrections?
I have one correction.
Okay.
On the minutes for February first, the public minutes on page three, down near the bottom. The board agreed to meet annually with the planning board to exchange information about the anticipated capital expenditures that should be meeting with the select board. It was presented by the planning board, well me, but it's meeting with the select board.
Alright, anything else? Alright, then all with a favor of approving those minutes as amended. Say aye.
Aye.
opposed or abstained? Okay, thanks. Alright, citizen comments? I can't really see. We have seven, it's like this long.
So Alex, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um Bob, I did. Anything you wanna comment?
No, I'm all set. Sorry. Thank you.
Donna, do you have any comment?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
And Heather, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Karen, do you have any comments?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sarah?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. And William?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks everybody.
Okay, thank you Maria. Alright, next up superintendent Ken.
Okay. I wanna read a portion of my comment, comments into the record, I'm reporting to the record. And this is around climate and safety. Today's world safety is a concern of everyone in our community. It is essential that we work together as a community in a forthright manner to do the best we can to provide a safe campus environment for students and staff. Sustaining a climate in which students and staff feel physically and psychologically safe is an essential condition for great teaching and learning. Threatening and similar behaviors are disruptive to a safe and productive educational environment. Those behaviors must be addressed in a serious compassionate and restorative way. In addition, creating a productive and trusting, trusting relationships within our community to do this work is fundamental responsibility. And we all have to work together as a team to promote overall campus safety. But having said that, I did invite the chief here tonight. And it's more of a kind of a symbolic statement that we work very closely together to maintain a safe and orderly environment. The chief has my personal cell number and I have his. And we text or communicate on a pretty regular basis. And I know the principals do do that with his department as well. And it has been a very productive relationship so far. I expect that to continue certainly. And very thankful that we have the chief in town who is very willing to work with, with the school and the district in general. So like to thank you chief for, for being here and, and helping us out to make sure it's a safe place for kids and staff. I am happy to report that we have been working on a a temporary plan to get police presence on our campus. Do we have that? We do have that plan ready. So are they gonna see it tonight?
In, in non-public. We would, yeah, would be in non-public, yeah.
So you see that plan in non-public, but.
Cause I seem like we have to, one of us, I have to sign it, right? Along with the chief and you?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so. So we've developed a plan to bridge the current SRO staffing challenges with the objective of providing more police presence on campus. And I trust that this presence will help reassure the school community that we do take school safety seriously. And we're continually focused on, on providing that safety. And the faculty, staff and administration, along with the Hinsdale Police will continue to act out of an abundance caution to make sure that this is a safe place for people to work in, for kids to go to school. So I'm happy to report that. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask if the chief, any questions in this?
Yep, I was gonna ask if, I mean, I neglected to call on you for seeing any citizen comments, so I'm sorry, chief. So if you, yeah, if you have anything you'd like to say or if the board has any questions for the chief.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here. I think that I would have come sooner, but I started exactly three years ago, like a week before COVID kicked off. So first we had a lockdown and all the associated issues with that. Then I had no officers, so it was kind of difficult to find time for some of the extra stuff. But we're in a much better place now. And I think that we have excellent relationship so far. I had good working relationships with schools of this. And I think that Mr. Karen and getting along extremely well and we're in communication on a roughly daily basis. I think that that's the standard where we should be with two executives. So I think he made a great hiring decision and I'm happy about the way that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Cool. Yeah, thank you so much for, for being here and for, for doing all that. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. As we discussed at the February twenty twenty-three meeting, we identified March fifteenth as a special day for training on the topic of campus safety and student safety. And the drummer Woodson Law is coming down to do that with our staff. So we're excited about that. And I know that drummer Woodson will have recommendations for me to share with the board, you know, as we move forward. Regarding the budget, Jody and I and others are planning for the budget form for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget with the community. We had a presentation this afternoon with the Hinsdale Elementary School staff. We're, we're using them as, as kind of our sounding board and asking for suggestions as to how we improve our, number one, the presentation. And number two, if they have any suggestions for the budget, please let us know. You know, Jody and I are willing to sit down with anyone, almost any side, to try to figure this out as we move forward. So the one thing that, that I underscore during the, that presentation, oh, by the way, we have a presentation at Hinsdale Middle High School on tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're kinda going and doing that. So but an important piece of research is that research and practice point the size of a learning community as the core factor, demonstrating that small schools are more likely to create the right conditions for student equity, student connection and high achievement. And that comes directly from Horace Teachers College Columbia. And I've done pretty extensive research on school size, having worked in large places. And probably nine out of every ten articles that you read support this statement, research articles that we read. So you know, I believe firmly that, that Hinsdale is doing great things for kids. It will continue to do great things for kids if we can maintain that, that small school atmosphere that we have, we have moving. So next topic is the tuition exploratory committee. And I know that board is, is gonna be doing some work around there. And I'm wondering if the board would approve a small number, a small team to have some at least preliminary discussions with Winchester to find out the viability of, of any tuition agreement with, with us. So I have that question for the board. Just consider it and we'll talk later. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I just, I had made a note. So in January, we had approved for you and Jody to reach out. So you're saying add more people? That was, that's the ask here?
I misunderstood.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so in January for you, for you and Jody to reach out. And then I had reached out to their vice chair, who used to be their chair, who, who I knew and just said, hey, they're gonna be reaching out to you at some point. So.
Okay, alright, great. Then, then we're on the same page. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Oh, that's okay.
Cool. Policy, Holly will, will talk about the policy committee. Professional development. And the reason I put this on the agenda is I know that you're going to be presented with the, the calendar for next school year. And I feel very strongly, you know, it's a good calendar. Maria worked hard to organize that and align it with the people that we need to align the calendar with. But there, particularly for where we are right now, what we need to do moving forward, it's not enough professional development time. And I know we had some communication with the teachers' union. And, you know, at this stage, they wouldn't agree to adding half professional development days at various points throughout the, throughout the school year. It doesn't affect their teaching time or teaching days. But I had some communications with them since and they're willing to sit down and look at that. So I wonder if you approve the calendar tonight, if there would be an option. These are successful conversations with the, with the teachers and they agree to add a, a number of half professional development days. Would you allow us to do that? Or have some conversations about maybe modifying the calendar, you know, moving forward. I think we're looking for four half days.
Yes, so the way I think and Sean and Julia jumping, because you were on the personnel committee that negotiated the last teacher's contract, the, the way, just off the top of my head, how I think that will work is that, you know, the board can modify the calendar at any point. However, if you're gonna sit down and talk with the teachers' union, it would, it would be the negotiating team. So there would be the board reps there, like the administration and the teachers can't do it because it's not your contract. It's the board's contract with the teachers' union. So for the administration to sit down and change things with teachers with the CBA, in the CBA, that's not appropriate. So we're just, yeah, I mean, I think as long as a negotiating team and their team and even in the, our team with the administration, you know, like who's on the negotiating team would agree to sit down. I mean, everyone have to agree.
Be looking to renegotiate?
No, but you'd be changing the contract. So it would be, it would be a sidebar. So yeah, absolutely. The team has to be involved. The board has to be involved. Do you have anything to add? Am I interpreting that right?
Yeah, yeah, because you basically said everything I was gonna say. Um, you know, yeah, so when we were in negotiations, we, you know, had talked about two extra days and that was something that we, we ended up dropping. So I was a little surprised when I saw it in the packet and I read, then I read Sav's, you know, response afterwards. I'm like, yep, she's correct, because it's in the contract that it's the, the eight days and not the ten. So, you know, I, I having had that as just as a, as a topic in negotiations, you know, I was like, I was like, oh, so you know, who's gonna think that the board's trying to get them extra PD days, right? Because that was something that we specifically talked about and, and we didn't. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, everyone's clear. The board hadn't seen anything about the two extra days until it was in the packet. But that was something that came from the administration. And I agree with Holly, that needs to be handled through negotiations. And if it's done as a sidebar, that's great. But the negotiating team has to be involved in that because it is a contract between the board and the union. So that needs to happen.
I understand that. I'm wondering if you would, just as a step back from that, would allow us, allow me to have some exploratory conversation to see if what the, kind of test the waters. And then if it's a viable, if I, if I think it's gonna be a viable option, you know, to certainly turn it over to the negotiating team. And if you don't want me to do that, that's fine, you know, but you know, give me an opportunity to sit down with, with, you know, members of the steering committee or the executive board of the union and just kind of test the waters. See what's, see what's up about their, about their thinking with, with adding these professional things.
Sounds like you've already done that. Of course, or made the first couple steps in your statement saying that they're willing to discuss it further. You've already reached out and had a.
I spoke with one person on the side.
Oh, yeah, yeah, my, you wanna go first?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, my gut is no, because you're taking away, that's one of the board's main purviews is the negotiating, this contract. I'll go along with policy and a few other big things, but it's one of the board's big things that we is under our purview. And I, I just don't feel comfortable without the board representatives being involved. But that's my gut. I don't know. But I'm more of a stickler for the rules.
Yeah, so I'm kinda with Holly and Julia, right? So I do see benefit in keeping in touch with and communicating openly with union leadership. I think that's always a good idea. I think it can be a fine line between having a conversation as far as what they may be willing to do and then impacting a negotiating item. I think that can be a tricky, I think that can be a tricky spot.
Enough said.
Yeah, that's kind of where I am too. Cause I don't wanna discourage communication in any way.
Yeah, cause that's great that you meet regularly, like we, that, that's appropriate.
That's critical. That's the first line of communication that should be, as it always should be, right? Just like, we should not be going directly to staff. Staff should not be coming directly to us. Everything goes from us. That's completely appropriate. I was taken aback only because when Sean and I were negotiating the contract, this was a real sticky.
It was.
We really wanted those two extra PD days and it was a digging in heels. So I was just surprised to see it. So I was interested in how it would be presented to maybe that change what we were unable to get much on at all. So I support the need for the extra PD days. We negotiated pretty hard for it. And I am hopeful that the next team is more successful in getting that. I think it's beneficial for staff and students for sure. Just needs to be done appropriately, but I don't ever wanna discourage you from, with optimized communication. So it is a little bit sticky for me. But I think until there's discussion of, I'm actually okay with it unless there's discussion of a change or a review. And then I, then I.
Yep, yeah.
But until against that point.
Yeah, because we don't wanna come in and be like, you, the administration and the teachers have this all ironed out and okay, the board's a side thought, because technically like when they grieved, I mean, this, they grieved us. It's, we're on the hook, you know, when, yeah, yeah.
I understand that. And appreciate it. Appreciate your position. So what I'll do from here is I was planning to meet with the union as I do on a, on a regular basis. And we'll, we'll just talk about this. And if there's, if there's real interest, if I get the sense that there's real interest, I'll contact you and say, let's get together and maybe we can develop something as a sidebar until we renegotiate the contract in earnest.
And maybe it'll be before you two are off, so you'll have an extra meeting.
That would be my hope.
So we'll make that a goal.
And, and my suggestion would be to also bring it up that personnel right now. Yeah, well, there's that. One of the things that, and I'll report on a little bit later, one of the things the personnel committee is doing right now, since, since Julie and I are gonna be off and we were, you know, doing the teacher's contract. And I think you and I did the parent contract, right? We wanted to make a, keep like a running list of topics to discuss at negotiations so that things weren't lost as people left, right? So I think that if we wanna pursue this increase in PD days, let's bring it up the personnel committee, add it onto that list and that way it doesn't get lost. Do you know what I mean? I think that would be good to put on the list.
Yeah, I think Sarah's here too. Yeah. Yeah, did you hear that Sarah?
Adding that to the list.
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I just, I.
Sorry, I was hand, I was handwriting, not typing it out.
Oh, no, that's fine. I'm like, oh, wait a minute. I think the person who needs to, the keeper of the list might be listening.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say wanna tie anybody's hands, but I'm pretty adamant that we stick to the contract. That we made that in good faith, so.
Yeah. I agree. Board communications, with the tremendous expertise of our director of technology, we've been working on a dashboard to enhance our, our communication with the board and monthly board reports. So we're planning to include some longitudinal information such as, you know, enrollment, attendance, discipline, health metrics, that sort of thing. And that dashboard should serve as what I hope would be touchpoints for the board, you know, moving forward. So Justin, do you have anything to add to that?
No, so not really, other than create this company will put down, see what it'll look like. And the types of reports I could run out of power screen or other sources.
Yeah, I don't have to do it right away, but something that we're working on.
I just wanna say as an actual board member, but just to let you know, I appreciated the last couple of months, the increase in communication from this administration. And what we're accustomed to. That's been extremely impressive. And I wanna thank you for that. And I think the incoming board is very fortunate to have that kind of communication. In three years, I was elected the day before we shut down the phone. That would only happen to me.
Builds character.
So I need, hold here, say, okay, executive meeting, we're going to shut down. Excellent. So, but I just wanted to say I have really appreciated it. And I think it is very refreshing and nice change. And I'm sure the board appreciates it.
Absolutely. Yes, yep, absolutely.
Thank you. The Twenty First Century Grant, I just wanted to put this on, I know it's on your radar screen, but we're in the process of reapplying to the Twenty First Century Grant, which funds our before and after schools program, the HASP program. And I've learned in a short period of time just how valuable that program is. And told Mary Ann that, you know, anything she needs, you know, we're willing to help with that. I know Karen's helping a lot, you know, with that particular grant as well. You know, there's some new wrinkles to the grant this time around where they're adding some really, some benchmarks regarding student achievement, you know, so there has to be a, a stronger link between what gets done in HASP and, and the classroom. So we look, we're figuring out how to we're not, I'm not figuring. You know, Karen and Mary Ann are, are figuring out what to do. And those services are so critical to this community. And they help families, you know, trying to balance their responsibilities with kids and work and so on. So I learned that pretty quickly. NIAS, NIAS is coming. They're gonna contact us in, in late March and we start that self-study process again. So I've talked about this a couple of times, you know, where we'd like to explore the initiation of some community conversations around important topics, you know, such as school climate and internet safety and, and respect, responsibility, all of those kinds of global issues that I think are important to have, you know, conversations with, with the community about. And I know that the board is interested in engaging the community in that. But I'm wondering if, if the, if I could ask for approval from the board to do some, some initial planning as to what those conversations might look like. And then a report back to, to the board regarding, you know, providing some framework around those conversations.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Yeah, I just had a note about that, that, and then you've kind of answered it. Cause you know, I said, we had, used to have forms before COVID. But this, you know, sounds like maybe a little more, or a little less structured maybe than what our forms kind of were, you know what I mean? So, um, so it was just gonna be, is this something that you're thinking the, the admin would do? Thing like a community conversation or admin board or like, or the board would do something on our own? You know, I mean, like what?
I think that, you know, whatever we do, it's better if we do it collaboratively.
Okay.
And, you know, viewed by the public is working together.
Yeah.
For the Hinsdale school community. I've talked with Karen about, about what that might look like. There might be some, some, some organizations out there who can help with that. So, you know, I would just like to be able to sit down with Karen and, and, you know, put some, put a frame around it as to what it might look like, how we might deliver it. And then we can, we could report to the board with, you know, sort of our findings. At least initially.
Yeah, what do you guys think? Fine?
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'm one for one. So I'll, I'll take it. Thank you.
Any questions for Kim? Alright, so then just, you know, you touched on a few things, but so we'll just run down the individuals' reports. For Jody?
Karen, how my report? In addition, I would like to mention that since I wrote this report, I was able to begin the finalization for the completion of the audit. So I received the audit report from the auditors. I reviewed it and everything is fine. There were no management findings. And we should be receiving the final report shortly. Other than that, my report, we have any questions? We haven't answered them.
Any questions for Jody?
Thank you. Thanks.
Karen, teaching and learning. Any questions for Karen?
How the tablet seems to be going good for the.
It's been such a huge help. It's really been a joy to watch him.
Yeah, no, the, the students, I was sitting with them at lunch and thought, he knows so much math and he's so good.
Seven, I think he said.
So, I mean, he's adapting.
He is adapting and he wants, he's so hungry to learn. So the tablet has been really helpful. It's a carry around. So it needs abuse for him. He needs to use the Google Translate. You can use it. Although I have to tell you, in the lab this week, I have not seen, I've talked to him, I try to talk to him every day. He's using the Google Translate less, less, able to respond in a, in a much more clear way. And if he needs it, he's so smart. He just knows exactly how to, where to go to get the right response that I was in it. So he's just really adapting well. The tablet's the whole big difference from him. He did, he was so appreciative of it. So.
Yeah, awesome. Alright, thank you. Principal reports, John?
So you had my report. And I put down the, if you go and look at the math scores, I put down the percentile. And so, you know, if you look at grade six, I'm with yours, only thirty percent of our students have that fifty percent percentile for median. And the numbers go through grade six mathematics, they're only at twenty-six percent. So that there is work to do there. That's tremendous amount of work. Yesterday in DLCs, we're looking at ramping up skill set. We did a little bit of bumpy road. Really trying to figure out how to progress master. And so we're looking at some different areas to do that. We formed the principal advisory group, right? I have ten staff. Our first meeting is actually gonna be March ninth. Right after school, so we have a good group of teachers. And they've been, you know, what's going well, what we need to improve. What they, you know, where they see the school that requirement for academics and all those things. We did administer that student wellness survey. It was disappointing.
Yeah, yeah.
Participants. And it, it went out to every family. And I was reluctant to just have a student take that survey without. And I was reluctant to just have a student take that survey without parental permission.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so, um. I will have the results March third, I thought it would happen much quicker, but, uh, one of the women from New Hampshire, she was on vacation.
Oh, yeah, cuz you're like, there's only forty-eight.
So anyway, so I'll have that information for you to be. And then you have our, you know, referral write-ups for the, the last, for January and February, which you did not have. At the last board meeting. And again, I think there's, there's been more of an uptick on some level-three behaviors, things like that, and the dashboard is gonna be really useful. Better than just these numbers. And Chris and, uh, Sam have been working on a, an additional, I don't know if you may want to explain it, which one may. But we showed be today.
Oh, um, so there's been. It's been hard to communicate out some of the write-ups and referrals for specific students, specifically those around special ed. One is we have a large special ed pool between middle and high school. And how do we convey that information to the case managers, especially when we start to get into things like manifestation meetings and so on and so forth? So, Mr. Killley and I have created a folder. Uh, it's hopefully a temporary solution, because I talked to Mr. Therry about this one, we're, we're trying to figure it out. Um, but in, within this folder, there's a very small select group of staff members, mostly administrators, guidance counselors, and then the case managers. They would have access to every single kid's write-up. In a, this, in this folder that's available on Teams to that small group. It's divided up by grade level and then by specific student. So if I'm a case manager and I have, uh, Joe Smith. I can go in, he's in eighth grade, select eighth grade, there's Jay Smith, yep. Click him, open it up and I can see every single write-up ever done. Now, this is a little bit more involved because it's extra steps, things we've already done, it's already in Power School. So I actually talked to Mr. Therryo today and we're gonna look at a way for just case managers to be able to access the logs. And that's the big thing for when they determine manifestation, manifestation meetings have to happen prior to ten. Total suspension days for a special ed student to determine if it's manifestation of their disability. So, we're just trying to. Bridge that gap to better communicate those. And then also other things we're doing is we're keeping teachers involved of when a write-up happens, just for full transparency. I am now sending it back to the person that originally wrote the student up so that they can at least know that their. Concerns are being addressed and how they were addressed. And so far, the teachers that I've asked about that, they, they love it. They love knowing that, yes, they were heard. They said, whoa, you know, I get. Different ends of the spectrum, though, that was too harsh, no, 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 that's not harsh enough. So, and then we have the conversation. Yes, and, and it starts that conversation of, well, why? And then, again, it's that piece where they don't know the other pieces that fall into place of why it was that? Because they might not know what's going on in other classes, exactly, exactly. So, I, I think we're, we're making a stride in the right direction for at least more information and getting people more comfortable, knowing that things are being done.
And the other thing is though, still keep confidentiality.
Yes.
Because my understanding in previous years, everybody could see every kid.
Yes.
And we, that's, that's not, you know.
Imagine that, do all the people with access to these keyboards are the people that should.
Should have access and that's always been.
Yeah.
Yep, and, and that's my number-one concern, um, you know, just the confidentiality piece, I have to deal with it every single day. Well, what happened with this kid when you got called, I'm sorry, I can't share that with you. Think nothing is happening. No, that's not necessarily the case, I just can't share it. Some, some, but most of them are pretty good, you know. I don't, I don't mind getting, giving the parents a call. But, you know, it's, it's the same with teachers, it's, it's kind of a need to know.
Yeah, well, like you said, it's good so they would know like other stuff like if, if, oh, this was really harsh, well, that's cuz something happened in this other class three times. And, you know what I mean, like, maybe not go into it, but just, hey, there's other stuff going on.
And that's been my, my favorite thing thus far, sending these write-ups back to the person that actually did it. Is now if there's a question or concern, they're, they're, I guess it's pulling them more in because they want to know.
Yeah.
Why, and it's, it's facilitating good, good conversations with, with, you know, respect of, you know, confidentiality.
No, that's great.
Yeah.
See, aren't you guys really sad you're leaving, things are really rolling in the right direction here, now you're leaving? The only thing we talked about for years, I was really happy now.
Can you do a written vote?
We could, we'd have to. You really have to have a big, like, yeah, campaign to do it, but. I was just gonna say, if anybody has a question for John or Chris, go ahead.
Um, I just, on the, on the testing, I know obviously we're all disappointed. Um, my perspective was gonna be stupid one, like, how does this compare to other, other school runs, but this isn't. You know, we know there's lost learning, but this is current test scores, obviously, right? So, so that is disappointing, but what I did have a question and I could go back and look, but you might have it more easily. How does this track to previous years? Are we seeing a backwards slide? I mean, the whole country had a loss learning, right? So, what we're comparing ourselves to is probably less than we like to see that was a few years ago. But, when you look at these percentages, pre-COVID, or take a five-year, look, hard look at what a scale. What, what a, what a curve would look like on that? How are we tracking compared to?
So that's gotta be the deeper dive, what I really like. Is what I've done in the past, so that sixth-grade cohort, you look at what they were as a fifth-grade cohort, a fourth-grade cohort. Instead of comparing grade six this year with grade. And so that's kind of the next steps.
Yeah.
So, and you know, if all of a sudden they were up here, fifth grade, and then now they dip, which. Again, is some of my experience in other schools of middle school, there's a middle school dip. So, but that, that'll be the next step and I can get that, well, you won't be here.
Shall we, shall we zoom in?
Yeah, so.
About how it tracks, everybody's lower, we've got lost learning, we've got a lot of issues going on, but I believe doing essence.
So, based on last year's information to go off of what John said. Uh, I, at the beginning of the year with the map testing we did in the fall, I took kind of an interest in that. And saw last year's, uh, for example, last year's seventh grade versus this year's eighth grade, same group of kids. And, uh, across the board, it, it, it took a little bit of doing because this, this, the scoring brackets are a little bit different.
Right.
But to see that, there, there is, was a growth. Uh, it might not have been very big, it might have only been one or two percent, but I did notice a growth. And, and I will say in a couple of the, the classes, there was a little regression. Um, but I think it, it's.
So I was just gonna add, um, having been for nine years the person that asked the question that you just asked, right? Um, there, it, it is a little bit better. There's still a lot of work to do, but it, it is a little bit better, there, there, there is improvement.
Thank you. Thank you, that's great. Um, any other questions for John or Chris? Alright, great, thank you guys.
You will talk about that and maybe in policy, but in, in general, you can talk about.
The referrals, yeah, we have, you know, I, I know I, I confiscated one phone, I think we had two phones confiscated. All of that since the last board meeting, I know I took one for sure.
Yeah, I just wondered with the, with the changing rules, how, how is that, have the kids been behaving with that change? Has it gone well, or are you getting more people and more people getting in trouble because you're getting called all the time?
No, no. The issue when Mr. Karen brought it up is we need to educate these students on the proper use of social media. And, and it trickles from home and then it trickles back to the school. And then it can create disruptions. And, you know, we, we had to suspend a couple of students because it was at home. But then they brought it to school, showed videos.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, to kids and, uh. And those are the things, how do we, because they don't think anything is real and a lot of the stuff isn't real, but it sure looks real.
Oh, no, it sure does, and that was such a. Uh, I just was wondering how, being a little stricter.
The whole idea of video, we've been on them with that, for sure. Especially the younger kids, cuz high school kids really aren't. They don't, if you go into lunch, which is where they have, you know.
Right.
They're not really using them, high school kids, which is nice to see. Conversation.
Actually talking to you, wow.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Chris, were you gonna say something?
No, I was just gonna go off of what John said, we've had our few incidences, um, and we deal with those as they come up. But I will say that, as he just said, it's kind of, kind of neat, they have the ability to use them during lunch. But there's some groups, they, they've taken it upon themselves, they put them in a pile and they're on the table and they just have lunch.
Oh, wow.
And some kids pull it out real quick, check, put it away and then they're happy. So just, I think having that little bit of relief is, is a lot for them.
That's great.
Yeah, like you're weaning them off of it a little bit or something, you know? Tethered to it all day and whatever, so yeah.
Definitely the high school is responding to it very responsibly.
Oh, that's good. Great, thank you. Alright, now, now Joe? Yes, Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions if you have any or anybody has any.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe? Are you finding it? It looks like you're looking for something.
There was, yeah, no, but then I, I read it earlier, but it didn't say, it's fine, it's fine. There was something, I didn't write it down, yeah, no, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Joe. Um, Justin? Great, and the dashboard, I know Justin had done a COVID dashboard for us and I mean, and that was great, so, you know, I'm sure that any dashboard comes up with is gonna be. That was, that was great, that COVID dashboard was very easy to use and it was.
Yeah. Excellent, so.
Any questions for Justin? Uh, Sarah, do you have anything on human resources report?
I have nothing to add, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Sarah? Nope, no questions, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, board business, so district meeting. Um, discussion of district meeting, so district meeting is, uh, the eighteenth at nine, we go first. Um, I know Gina was gonna be away and out of town anyway, so she's not gonna be there. Sean keeps telling me he's not going to be there, but he is going to be there.
I am, I got the, I, I put in the leave slip for work, which was approved, so I have the day off.
There you go, it's on the recording now, he will be there. I don't care, wear a mask. Oh, so my question of district meeting, so I know Kim and I have been talking back and forth for childcare for district meeting, I just was wondering how that's going with volunteers.
I have no idea.
I don't have any volunteers right now.
Mr. Benson told me he volunteered, which is now on the recording, but.
I have reached out twice.
Okay, I'll check. Although, that's, gosh, you have, it's not like you haven't been busy, I know you've been super busy with the other, no, I saw Mr. Benson face to face and he told me, so.
He's agreed to be there.
Okay, good.
But working with the half students.
Oh, awesome, good, okay.
I don't know where he's at, yes.
Alright, awesome.
Yeah, Erica.
Yeah, well, he told me like right before vacation, I ran into him when I was coming in one morning here and, and he offered it. So, cuz he's done it almost like every year for quite a few years. Um, he, he and a few other teachers who don't live in town, we wanna try to recruit staff who don't live in town, cuz we need the people who are voters to be at the meeting. So, awesome, so, yeah, so once we know that for sure, um, you know, we can publicize that just so parents know. Um, and the budget forum, I know, you know, if, if we can get people for that good, if not, whatever, we've done various ways. We've had childcare and have not had childcare at the budget forum, so that'll just play it by ear as to closer to. Uh, was there anything else that you guys wanted, does anybody else want to say about district meeting or anything? Uh, one, one thing about it's sort of, it's not really district meeting, sort of adjacent, um, so on election day. We just need, um, election counters, I know I brought it up last month, technically we are all eligible to count because none of us are on the ballot. Um, I, I'll be there. And April was interested, it starts at seven o'clock, uh, when the polls close on the fourteenth.
I'm, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be.
You're not sure, okay. So, um, Julia, do you think you?
I, at this point, I probably will be in connection.
Okay, okay, okay. Alright, so, um, if, uh, Maria, if you could let, uh, Andy Oriano at some point, cuz she's the district clerk, that. There's two board members, April and I can do it, um, so sometimes.
And I'll let you know if I can.
Okay. But, yeah, sometimes she'll recruit some extra people, um, you know, we usually generally only need like. Four or five people at the most, ours, ours isn't as, isn't as in-depth to count as the town size, so. Alright, um, that's all I had, if nobody else had anything else for district meeting. Uh, so next up, the calendar. Whoever's speaking on that.
Maria?
Sure, well, I just wanna point out, um. That we did a little more research on the April vacation because I follow the format we did for the past couple of years. And found out that, um. That ours has ended up being different from Brownborough's for April, and there was a concern for the Wyndham Regional Career students. And so, we did a little more research and it turns out that, um. This, um, coming year, Keen, Banana and Brownborough are all having the April break the fourth week. So, um, I actually did move it to the fourth week on this new.
Makes sense.
So, I don't know if everybody's, the board's okay with that.
Absolutely.
We thought that might work better.
Yeah, I mean, we've actually never had it be different than Brattleboro since we went to the Career Center. And I even gone, went back five years and compared all our calendars, so, except for the one, the year where we have building projects, we've had it in March. So, yeah, I mean, I know, their, their break has changed this year, it's usually the third week and they move theirs to the fourth or vice versa. And, um, so that's it, so, yeah, we've, we've always, since we started sending kids there. Made sure they line up, cuz then our kids miss two weeks of school, a week there and a week, so it's just, yeah. So I think that's, I agree with that. So, yeah, so, um, so that's changed, so, yeah, and it looks like you guys are all in agreement, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then somebody to speak about the PD days that you'll see have changed, so. We just wipe them off because of the aforementioned discussion. Yeah, just wanna make sure everybody noticed those little green days are gone.
Yeah.
So, um, somebody else have any other questions about next year's proposed calendar?
My only thing was that in, in August, there's a, there's the number twenty-one in the date. My suggestion would be to not even have a number there, so it's not confusing to parents that that's the first day of school. Cuz in past calendars, there hasn't been a number until the first day of school.
Oh.
Just to, just to avoid any confusion.
So get rid of the twenty-one, the six thirteen, all those are Sundays anyway, but.
Yeah, no, just the Monday.
The Monday one.
Yeah, usually the Sundays and Saturdays evening, even on the calendar.
I like it on there, cuz sometimes I look at the calendar and I.
Yeah.
I'm starting at Sunday and it starts at Monday, but, yeah. Any other questions on that?
My only comments I had written down, we've already covered, goes first, agreeing with Sarah's reply and following the contract.
Okay, so we just need a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those favorites say aye. Alright, so next up is setting up graduation date, prom and class trip, so do we have any handouts? Normally we get. We usually get, um, information about where it's gonna be and also, no, but I, okay.
I mean, Stone Wolf on.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, May thirteenth, prom and Stone Wolf on.
Yeah, I saw that in it, yes, don't worry. Alright, well, it's been there before, so maybe that's why, usually they'll give us like a whole big. To do about it, right? Like, like about, okay, it's gonna start at this time. To do about it, right? Like, like about, okay, it's gonna start at this time and we're gonna have wobble, right? Oh, you thought it up from last year, but yeah.
Well, sometimes.
Sometimes, it depends on the class, I mean, I've got, we've got a whole bunch, but we were interested, my, my tenure's been interesting because they were trying to have them.
It's sometimes they've had the, uh, class president.
The class president here to do it, yeah, but yeah, they had a Stonewall Farm a bunch, so.
But if you want more information, I can get it.
No, I think, no, I think.
I think that I, I have what I need.
Mm-hmm, so May thirteenth. Um, and class trip information, is that in there too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, and they've, and they've gone there before.
Yeah, New York City, except for on my report, it was June ninth, then they couldn't, and so when I submitted it, it was June ninth, it's June second.
June second. And who are the chaperones?
Uh, Chris, who doesn't know that he's a chaperone. Sarah Burgess, Brittany Ball, Leo, Leo, Marshall, and there's a. There's one more. It's five or six of us, it's five.
Sarah Scott, Sarah Scott, who is a, a parent, she's also a para, but she's licensed, uh, she's an LPN.
Oh, that's good, nice.
Yeah.
Great.
Alright, thanks, Sarah. Alright, um, and then. Graduation, we can approve that as a whole slate if you want, these dates, so graduation date, so.
Isn't there always the caveat though with?
No.
Graduation date and snow day.
This is where we usually approve it, it's the caveat when we approve the calendar for the next year. Usually, this is where we set it, the only tricky thing is, is that we're a week earlier than normal, and it's snowing right now.
That's kind of where I'm going.
Stuff, but, um, but where we are, we have three snow days so far this year, and. I know last year, we, they got creative, because parents were told the date. As a definite, and it wasn't, so we had to get creative and back into it and may not change it, even though we had the snow days and her things counted as school days that. Maybe shouldn't have, but, um, so, we have three snow days, and you know, with the law, unless it's changed, as my understanding, all these years is that. They can't go five, more than five days after graduation, right? The seniors can't miss five days.
Yeah, the most they can miss is five.
Is five days, yeah, that's when we made the class trip a school day last year. But, um, so, yeah, so we have three right now. Um, so, yeah, I don't know, people who are better at this than, than I should, if, if. So, are we safe to have graduation? We're safe to have graduation on the ninth, right, so. Right now, right? I'm sorry, thank you, seventeen, sorry, sorry, thank you, so what? Yeah, cause sixteen, well, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, because we have, does that PD day move then in June, since we have snow days? Cause we have a PD day right now on the sixteenth.
And that's for teachers to wrap up.
Yeah, so I wanted to move into the, no matter what, okay, so, one, two, three. Yeah, so I guess it's fine unless we have two, three more days.
Right, can't have, we can't have three snow.
Three more days, we can have two.
So, don't change like that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We had some that were a bit ridiculous earlier.
It is, there you go. It's like, it's not, it's dark, it's not snowing. Alright, yeah, so, yeah, so I guess, um, yeah, it's kind of a, a little bit of a gamble, because it's. It's early, it's early in the month.
The glass is half full.
Yeah, it's good.
Alright, so that means graduation would be June seventeen. Okay, so we can have three separate motions, like you said, wanna do a slate, so graduation, June seventeenth. Prom, five thirteen, at Stonewall Farm, and class trip, six two, to New York City.
I'll make a motion to approve those slate updates.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those favors say aye. Uh, opposed or abstained? Okay, thank you. Alright, so yearbook ads, so, um, Maria. Has given us information, so that I talked with Ms. Fowler ready, and the prices are the same this year as they were last year. Um, but so the, the price list is, is what I had from last year, so, but they are the same. Um, the ads attached are ads that we did to the last couple of years. One to thank teachers and staff for everything with COVID, and then we did one that we, we've done forever, it hasn't been this particular, but, you know, to. Congratulations graduates.
Right, right.
So, what are our thoughts? Do we wanna go back to doing the one? That is for students, do we wanna do a student and staff? Um, if we do the staff one, we just have to reword it, because it's. Pretty much like.
Covidy.
Covidy, yeah. It's pretty covidy, so, um, anyway, so, discussion on that.
I think we should do both, but that's my opinion.
Okay.
I think we should do both, what?
Ads, the one for the students, the one for the teachers and staff.
Yeah, Sean would just have to work on the wording of the other one, because it, like he said, it's covidy, it talks about go above and beyond and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Events and all that stuff.
I think, I think with everything that the teachers. And staff. Do throughout the year. Um, regardless of COVID. Um, deserves some recognition at the end of the year, that's one.
Sean?
I'm fine either way.
And you're good with kind of rewording it and making it your normal, okay? Alright, so then we would, oh, I'm, oh, shoot, I don't have the email to say what we would get, one was a half a page, I think.
The student one, it looks like.
Is that, and then the one was, I think, a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, one was a half and one was a quarter, so. Um, it was one seventy, so two seventy, yeah, two seventy-five, I do remember that from the email. So we would just, you know, a half a page for the student ad and a quarter page for the staff ad, and the total is two seventy-five out of the school board. You know, line item, you know, our account, and, um. Jody would work with this fall already to move the money around. Sound good? Right, so I probably need a motion to expend that money.
I will make the motion to, um, do those two ads.
One second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those favors say aye. Opposed or abstained? Great, thank you. Alright, uh, student, board member items, did Connor pass along anything?
No, I, I just told me last minute, she got it out, so.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, any other business, um, oh, I just wanted to remind the board. Of our board retreats slash self-evaluation, you know, meeting, um, this Sunday.
We're supposed to, do we, you sending something?
Yeah, but it's.
Two do lists for that, didn't you?
I sent you two evaluations, one was for a manual that we usually decide not to do, because it's very cumbersome, and the other one is a one pager. In the School Board Association, so.
I, I want the one page.
Can do a one pager.
Yeah, that was the one we've used the last couple of years, I actually found, well, last couple of times, the last time we did it was twenty nineteen before COVID.
Um, my question was, do we do it ahead of time or do we do it that day?
Um, I would do it ahead of time, and then we'll talk about it, yeah, bring it to the meeting, we'll talk, it's like six questions or something, okay? And we'll talk about it, um, it's, I have written down ten AM, is that correct?
This is Sunday.
Okay, that's better. Okay, eleven AM, thank you, I looked, I wrote it down without double checking my notes.
Yeah, I have eleven too.
Okay, great, yeah, that's good, so, um.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and.
You keep saying it's still gonna be a Sunday.
It's better than the evening, though. Um.
Here.
Uh, the. Cause we wanna have a different location, so remember one year we like scouted like other locations that we would, you know, like a restaurant or something? And we landed on the library, so at least we get a different location, so it would be the board.
You picked the library over a restaurant?
Well, we, we couldn't find anything that, that wasn't expensive to use a back room, or, you know, trying to be.
Physically responsible, a hundred percent.
Yeah, and we brought, we just, you know, had a potluck kind of thing, brought. You know, muffins, juice, whatever, so, I.
Is that what we're doing, potluck?
I mean, I'll, I'll bring some stuff, but I don't think we should sign up, just bring whatever you wanna drink, you know, um.
That was gonna be my next question.
What if I wanna bring nothing?
Yeah.
You have to bring some, so that was gonna be my next question, though, it's gonna be food.
Um, we were gonna, we usually do a potluck, so we don't spend the money. So just bring, you could bring your own. Meal, you could bring stuff to share, I don't care, whatever. Um, I don't think it's gonna be super long, me, I mean, who knows, and I think, and I also sent out the, uh. Uh, article that Kim had sent to us, so look that over, we can talk about that. Um, usually it's just the board and superintendent, um, we don't, Maria, we don't really need, I can just take notes for it, it's not really a. Anything, you know, that we need official, so. So, does anybody else have any questions or comments, or?
So, there's someone will be there to let us know, so.
Kim. There you go, I think Sean and I are the only ones, and Gina, but she's not here, who've done this before, in the library like that, so. Yeah, I might try to make us some nifty fancy French toast blueberry thing that I read about, but I'm not gonna promise.
Nothing that Anne made that?
It wasn't that one, but that's what made me think of it, she did make a really good.
She did a really good job of that.
I don't really, if you could get her the, the, the recipe, that would be good, but I can buy, I found one online, so I'll try. I'm not gonna promise, anyway. Alright, cool, so. I told you, we scheduled extra meetings, Julia, just for you. So, alright. Looking forward to that, okay. Community reports.
Uh, so personnel, we kinda went over, um, you know, we're compiling that list for future negotiations, just so. People who are taking over, you know, uh, where some of us were leaving have left off, you know, won't lose. Some of the momentum that we've talked about, um. One of the big things with this last meeting was we did find some inconsistencies, uh, in the personnel manual that. Jody and Sarah will be working on, maybe bringing to the board at some point in time, but it's very. Very complicated and convoluted, so.
And you don't need to explain it here tonight.
Correct, that's kinda where I was going with that.
There's some work to be done.
There's work to be done.
Hey, thank you. Uh, health and wellness?
I can chime in about it, sure, we did meet, um, as a group, we elected a, a chair, it was really all in my report really quick. Um, we're working on a wellness fair for the, the district and the community. Um, and we have our next couple of meetings scheduled to meet our policy requirements as well.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions about that? Alright. Uh, finance and budget.
April. Going forward and getting ready for the forum and the town meeting, basically.
Yeah. Yeah, and everybody's like, you know, Kim and Jody have done a report, uh, Sean did, uh. PowerPoint on some stuff that he's gonna present at district meeting. Um, April and I have been working on a few things, you know, we're gonna, you know, whatever for the forum and just having some great information. And, and the form is you're gonna be not available, right? Yeah.
Yeah, really needed, it's a one week in March, I cannot be here on Tuesday.
Yeah, no, that's fine, totally understand. So, yes, and, um, the flyers went to every mailbox, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four mailboxes in town, and Matt and I. Print, got them printed, brought them home, assorted them by mail route and took them to the post office, so. Much like with your survey where everyone got one, we're gonna have like twenty-five people there. But, at least we did it, and, you know.
Never know.
In past times, we've had it where we sent them the flyer out to everybody for a forum, and we got, yeah. But you never know, it's good.
And we need to get that date on the.
Yes, I did send an email about that to somebody at one point, but yes, got it on the sign, um, community connections, start hitting it too. Even though everyone got it, I think it's good to.
Someone took a picture of the flyer and, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna post tonight the little thing I made up.
No, she made up like a nice graphic one, we didn't go with that, because we wanted to be streamlined, to not spend the money on a really pretty flyer.
Yeah, don't.
Yeah. So.
I'm, I'm truly disappointed, I can't be there.
Yeah. Anything you might think we wanna make sure we throw in there, let us know, you know? Great, staff development.
Uh, we're meeting on the twenty-second of this month. We'll have more after that. Yeah. It got changed.
I know, right? Um, no, it's great. Uh, legislation and HSBA, um, so we all get the, you know, weekly updates, there's so many laws and stuff right now, I didn't. I didn't put it together, but, um, and then I'm going to a national conference at the end of this month in Tampa, so. Uh, so I can bring some stuff back, this is like the main big national for their first possible first conference, I can bring some good stuff back from that. Um, hasp.
Um, moving forward, the Twenty First Century Grant, as Kim was talking about. Um, it's due March seventeenth, we should know the results by May eighth, she said. Um, there is a needs assessment survey right now that's been put out on social media, I'm gonna post it on the community connections. Um, uh, thing tonight, um, with the link for that. Um. And, yeah, I think we're.
And it has to be get done before the seventeenth, is it part?
Yeah, there's, I think it's, I think the deadline, I think she said the eighth was the deadline for that survey or something like that. I didn't write that down, sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
But, um, but, yeah, and then, um, we're thinking for next year that we might meet every other month. So we'll have, uh, more meetings for next year versus what we're doing now.
Okay.
So.
Cool, but we feel good about having the grant ready, maybe the deadline.
Yeah, and there's been a lot of work done and on already, it's a full, we haven't, they haven't.
Critical that program.
Yeah, and they haven't fully written it, rewritten it since twenty thirteen, so it's a lot of work and a lot of updates that need to happen to it, so a lot of. Stuff is happening with it right now, Mary Ann is super engrossed in it.
She's the best.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, let's see, so, the selectmen, uh, this past week, they talked about, uh, they had the public hearing for their two bonds, they're gonna have, uh, two bonds. Um, on town meeting day. Um, for the. Scale at the transfer station and another one to refurbish, uh, some fire trucks. Um, the brush truck and one of the other vehicles, I can't remember which one it is. Um, so they had information there on Monday for that. Um, they are getting an extra two hundred and twenty thousand in rooms and meals tax that they weren't anticipating, so that's good, that'd be extra money that they can use. Um, hopefully to buy down taxes, but it's up to them how they wanna use it. Um, and other than that, it's pretty much been business as usual.
That was rooms and meals tax?
Yeah, rooms and meals.
Meals, yeah.
So that, that's some nice unanticipated revenue, I did ask them if they, um, if they anticipated any other unanticipated revenues. They weren't anticipating any others. Chief was there, he was like, so you asked your question, I don't think you could answer. Is there anything else coming down the pike you don't know about? So, yeah.
Do they appreciate the humor?
I think that they did, I, I hope so. Yeah. That's about as best you can hope for.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Alright, thank you. Uh, facilities.
Uh, so, facilities, we, we did the CIP, since we didn't really want to, um. Like do any kind of, do any extra warrants or anything this year, and you know, with budget and all that, so we moved some stuff around the CIP, um. That should be, I mean, I'm assuming we'll show the, well, you guys will show the board that at some point in time.
Sure.
Um, once, there are a few, few, um, i's to dot and t's to cross, and then we'll bring that, you know, to the board. Um, so one thing that was on actually last month's report, the written one that I left in your packets. Um, that I kinda brushed over, uh, with the trees at the elementary school, and I. Brushed over it, because we wanted to give Joe a chance to talk to people at the elementary school, but, um, you know, now the trees are down. And the plan, uh, I don't know how much, I don't remember how much detail you gave to your staff, but the plan is to put the, um. Seven new maple trees up, and each class will basically adopt a tree, and it'll be part of a whole like Arbor Day. Arbor Day or Earth Day, depends if, if the ground's frozen and we can't plant, you know? Then it's Earth, then it's Earth Day. Um, but like I said, we didn't wanna announce that too soon, just because we wanted to give Joe a chance to, to, you know. Tackle that one, uh, but like I said, the trees are down and that's the plan, so it should be kinda cool, because each grade will have, uh, a tree to call their own.
That is cool.
Yeah, and with these ones, we'll be able to space them, so we'll have nice, healthy trees versus the disease ones that we took down. So it'll be great.
There you go.
I'm actually looking forward to seeing them, I'll, I'll do a drive-by.
Yeah.
Looking forward to seeing them when, when they're in. Should look nice.
I just hope we don't dig where the time capsule is.
No, you won't be digging there, I, I did remind you where that was, right? I can draw you a map.
Yeah, cause Sean buried it.
Yeah. So I, so I think like right now, there's only two of us in the district that know exactly where that time.
Yeah, Sean and Matt, they buried it.
Yeah. I'll draw you a map.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah, they sent me a picture at the time with their shovels, but I couldn't tell you anymore as to where, it's, it's at the elementary school. That's all I know, anyway, that was a fun thing.
That was a fun day.
Alright, awesome, thank you. Uh, community connections?
So, um, I spoke about it, or, you know, already, pretty much, we're gonna post the um, forum. And uh, and we're also gonna um, try to put out a couple of uh, budget backs out onto the Community Connections.
Yes, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, that we were gonna start kind of putting tidbits out on. So people were getting right information instead of the.
We decided to do it closer to the forum, so it wouldn't get lost.
Yes, we're all prepared for the forum, we have everything like.
The end of this week, beginning of next week. We'll have some out.
Great, thank you. My behavioral support, uh, Julia. Uh, we have not had a meeting. Joint loss?
Uh, we're meeting on the twentieth of this month.
Uh, policy committee, so we met um, on the fifteenth of. February, our next meeting is the fifteenth of March. We're gonna be like, the, or the third Wednesday or what I think it's gonna be. Right, um, every month. We are just right now looking at the cell phone policy, so it was on. Myself, Kim, John, Joe and Connor, who Connor was fabulous, absolutely fabulous. Um, Connor and Kim had met with the student leadership type team and they had some really great ideas, I don't wanna go too much into. What that is right now, but we're still working on it. Um, so yeah, we're gonna be finishing that, but yeah, Connor was, I was super, super impressed. Just like the level of engagement with the kid, with the other kids and how he presented it back to the committee. I don't know if you guys have anything to add, but. Yeah. Yeah, great. But he was zooming us that day as well because he had just come from driver's ed or something, right? Yeah, so. No, yeah, I know, he has his camera off, so yeah. But um, no, so that was awesome. So we'll be bringing that in, in hopefully April.
I'm, I'm really glad they're putting something together and actually using student voice. Like the stuff you've been waiting for. I've been waiting for this for nine years and it's probably gonna be next month, right?
Yeah, because he, that was great.
I think that's fantastic, I'm really happy to hear that.
Yeah. That's great. Alright, um, citizen comments, so we'll start with the chief. Do you have any citizen comments, chief? Well, you can talk about whatever you want. Maria, you could check online.
Okay, um, Alex? Any comment?
I don't at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, Bob, any comments? Donna, do you have any comments?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. iPhone, do you have any comments?
Nope, they left.
Jared, do you have any comments? Thank you. Karen, do you have any comments?
I do, um, I did comment in the chat, I don't know if you guys saw it, but um, Julia's. She says pretty much prom committee chair, um, but she just looked it up and she did confirm that prom is from seven to ten. At Stone Wall Farm that night. And then my other question was the graduation date. Um, they graduated on June eleventh last year. I'm just wondering with only three snow days right now, why it's June sixteenth? Seventeenth, I'm sorry. And this, with only three snow days, why it's so late?
I'm just looking, well, because they still.
I know they used the senior, the trip as a school day, but it's still a whole week ahead.
I'm just, I'm just trying to look because it's hard because it's.
So it's this day, so that's it, right? So this is not the last day of school because of snow days.
No, yeah.
It's this day, right?
Yeah, yeah, the last day of school on the ca- calendar was the fifteenth, so, so then, I don't know, I mean.
In order for them to, in order, I think. I think why is because, in, just in case, because we're having all this extra snow. And um, right now, just to make sure that the seniors don't miss more than five days, right?
Didn't move it, it was already.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think that's why it's there.
She's at, right, but she's asking why it's later than last year, so. It's probably because um, maybe the way that the breaks went, because did we have more days? You know what I think is because two Christmases and New Years were on weekends, so we had days before and after. If they're not, if they fall right, we get just one week. But we had a Friday and Monday. Yeah, so what, so what do you do when you do the calendar and we figure it out to begin with, you, you just, you have to do a hundred and eighty student days and we. PD days and the breaks and stuff, so that's just where it fell. Um, with the different, like she said, we had like two extra days for Christmas because it was, you know, we had. Right, yeah, it's the same number of days, it's just how it.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, if there are three more snow days, would they be graduating a week later?
Yes, if there are three more snow days, they'd have, we'd have to push it to the next week because that would mean. There would be more than five days of school after graduation and.
Right, right.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was asking three, but okay, I'm just curious, it just seemed like it was super late, but.
Alright, we, we've done a different, I mean, it has fallen that late before for sure, but yeah, it's just the way the calendar felt, but yeah, so just pray for. No more than two snow days.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Sarah, do you have any thing to add?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. William, do you have any comments?
I do not, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Alright, let me just see your motion going to non-public.
I'll make the motion.
Second roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we're doing it on public. Thank you, everybody. So we need uh, Kim and Jody and.